Kick off twenty twenty five.
Ready to go, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I will call the January seventh, two thousand twenty five regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council to order. I think we're back to this side of the dice, so if Councilmember Paddock would please lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leah, roll call, please.
Mayor Holt Clark?
Here.
Mayor Protem Vinyel?
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari?
Here.
Councilmember Steckler? Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Duque?
Here.
Councilmember Paddock?
Present.
Councilmember Steckler informed me a bit ago that he has been delayed by an appointment, so he plans to be here. So we will not deal with the motion to excuse unless we need to at the end of the meeting. Uh, with that, brings us to our first opportunity in twenty twenty five for audience communication. Would anyone in chambers like to address the council, seeing no one indicate they would like? I do not see any members of the public online. So we will do have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Brings us to our presentations of, uh, nope. Oh, I was, yes, to our presentation. Um, miss municipal code update, Mr. Ryan.
Okay. Good evening, y'all. Happy New Years. I'm excited to see everyone and start the new year fresh. Uh, speaking of freshness, um, I'm going to be introducing a new item, a new annual thing we're gonna do at the city every year. It's called the annual code update. Hold on your socks, it's gonna be boring. Um, so what is annual code update? This is about maintenance, um, and maintaining the municipal code. Municipal codes should be updated through a regular, consistent process. Um, over time, a lot of times we identify code fixes that need to be addressed and really, eh, we'll just get it later. Then it never happens, or we make kind of piecemeal code changes without really considering, well, there's a lot of, uh, maybe downstream effects from a code change that we really didn't anticipate. Um, a lot of times, a lot of the code changes that we're talking about are maybe well-intentioned, but kind of outdated code that can hinder new opportunities for a city to grow. Or sometimes the code is kind of vague or poorly written, or it was written with, uh, maybe, it was written at a time where the person who wrote it had a clear understanding of what it means, and then that person leaves and everyone's like, well, actually, we have no idea what that means, or maybe it's a little more open for interpretation. So the annual code update is going to be a, um, deliberate process, um, in which we try to get a more efficient, um, code. This is gonna be a stakeholder, uh, stakeholder-driven process, and we're gonna be focusing primarily on land development issues. Um, specifically when land development code is creating ambiguity, unnecessary restrictions, or just unneeded, unneeded bureaucratic, uh, review. Um, part of the stakeholder driven process is gonna include an extensive public outreach process, where we're gonna be soliciting the public for their contribution on what kind of code I, uh, what kind of things that they've identified that could be updated or not be updated. We're gonna be talking to businesses and setting up a focus groups with businesses and working closely with our friends with, uh, the business community like at the chamber to attack the businesses about, you know, what, is there any elements of the municipal code that maybe isn't working for them, or is kind of unnecessary slowing things down? This is about identifying red tape and trying to make things more efficient. Um, so what is it for? Um, the big thing to know that this is about, this is a process for making lots of little changes. This is for code issues that are outdated or vague, um, code issues that are minor in scope for the city at large, but have a pretty important impact maybe for a specific industry or for specific operations, or are code issues that govern how the city, uh, process, that govern kind of how the city processes an item, or, and it, this kind of creates inefficiency and slowness. What are they not for? This is not our vehicle for significant policy changes. This is not for rezoning or anything like other land use decisions. Those are, those are big items that require more deliberate conversation and a little more robust, specific conversations with the public. Uh, this also is not for controversial changes that, again, just merit significant debate and discussion. Um, this is kind of the reader, a good example of kind of what we're talking about is defining what block coverage means, or defining, just kind of clarifying when the difference between a roadway buffer versus a median, or some of these other things that are, um, maybe pretty boring for most of the general public, but have, that can slow the way that our planners are making decisions about buildings. So what is the, uh, our proposed process for this is we're gonna be doing a public outreach that involves surveys, focus groups, stakeholder interviews, things along those lines. We'll be, uh, reviewing this in a public workshop, uh, with the community, both the public and the virtual workshop. And then, um, for discussion and adoption, we'll review, um, we'll review, um, we'll bring it to city council and, uh, planning commission to kind of get y'all's feedback. And then this is an annual cyclical process. We'll do it every year. Well, you're always discovering new things, and then, uh, we'll restart all again the next year. Um, the timeline for this is in the winter, we're gonna, I'm introducing this to y'all and the planning commission. And then in the spring, we'll be kind of reaching out to our surveys, doing your stakeholder engagement and our focus groups. And the summer is when we'll be really evaluating all this feedback we get from the public and from the business community, things along those lines. We'll be doing our public workshops and actually drafting the, the code language. And then finally, in the fall, we'll be bringing it forward for, uh, planning commission recommendation and then for city council review. Um, so, and I just wanted to let you all know that this is one of the items that we're gonna be, the planning department is going to be engaging on this year. And if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? Councilmember Duque?
In terms of the surveys, focus groups, stakeholders, what additional resources are gonna be used for that? And then how does that impact any, um, ongoing surveys or, uh, that from different departments that are happening?
I don't think too many additional resources are gonna be needed, other than staff time. Um, we're pretty, it's gonna be leveraging our existing relationships, or trying to establish new relationships with groups like, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Um, surveys, um, it's gonna be more, it's not a traditional survey as much as it's gonna be more of a public invitation process, where we're gonna be putting out public comment, we're gonna be putting out emails and putting out, um, socials and stuff like that, inviting people to provide ideas or provide observations of where the code maybe isn't working for them, and then we'll, uh, review it from there.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, so yeah, so maybe if we can change, instead of using the word survey, since that's like a very specific, so we can go that way. Same thing with like, any of the focus groups. My concern is, we don't see responses, we don't have a high response rate for surveys in general, um, in general. Even something as like from the chamber to get survey responses from their own members is pretty limited. And so I wanna make sure that this isn't like, you're going to an outside vendor, or you're, you know, looking to contract with anyone for results that we may not be needing. And then also thinking through all the other things that we have anticipated. So if there's any way of working, um, I'm assuming when you say staff time, is this a communications marketing department?
This will be planning staff. This will be all done in-house.
Fantastic, but, um, if it's anything to do with communications, I feel like there's, I'm, I'm hoping you'll be working with the experts on that kind of stuff?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And like facilitate, facilitating that, okay.
Absolutely, Councilmember. We'll be working with our wonderful communication staff and, um, we, making sure that anything we do is gonna be, um, locked up with other departments.
I assume so. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Cavallari?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Um, and let me just first start by saying that I, I like this idea of constantly evolving, or at least seeing the revolution of, of, or evolution of codes, um, you know, to at least kind of get with the times. I think we've all seen and run into a few snags where we're just behind, behind the times by like ten, fifteen years. But what is, what is the outreach mechanism look like? So do we send out, hey, businesses, what, what do you think is wrong with Mill Creek? What, what does that look like?
Well, a lot of the outreach is probably gonna be along the lines of like, hey, are you a businesses, are you a business or developer, are you a community resident? And have you ever run into an instance where the code, um, has hindered you from being able to achieve what you wanted? Or another way to kind of think about it is like asking the public, you know, is there, have you encountered any instances where it's like a catch twenty-two in the code, or like where, you know, this, eh, maybe there are conflicting requirements that staff had to work through additional times. In truth, a lot of the solicitation that we're gonna be probably getting the most information from is gonna be from within our own city. It's gonna be also from like the Public Works Department, and it's gonna be from, um, you know, just the stormwater guys and stuff like that. Figure out like, hey, is, is this process being at an unnecessary time to this, to this review process? But to the public, we're gonna be very, pretty deliberate in trying to make sure that we're wording things correctly in terms of what we're trying to feed, in terms of what we're trying to s- get input on. You know, there's certain things we're probably not gonna, we're gonna stray from, we're not gonna try to, um, tackle head-on. Things like, you know, say like middle housing, or stuff like homelessness and homeless encampments. That stuff that's ness- that's kind of controversial, it's a little, that's a little bigger than scope of the problems that we're trying to address. We're really trying to, uh, trying to identify the really minor technical stuff that causes the hiccups.
Yeah, just the minutia and clean up the codes, right? Right, now it sounds good, I'm on board. Thank you.
You might consider reaching out to those who have applied to the city for permits in the last two to three years and their consultants, because they may be best suited to identifying where they've hit snags.
It's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay, look forward to more in the coming months.
Thank you.
Okay, getting off the year to the right start, we're talking about NPDES permits.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I know this is exactly what you wanted to start the year off with. It's the conversation we're all clamoring for. Tonight, I'll be just giving kind of a stormwater update on the work we did in twenty-four, um, specifically towards some of those non-compliances we had, and then, um, updating you on the ecology requirements that we've been given after, um, quite a long time working back and forth with them. I always start just to make sure that we all know, um, background of the permit. National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, that's the federal level created by the Clean Water Act. Then each state has their own, which we have our specific Phase Two Washington State Permit. Um, it allows us to collect the discharged stormwater. And, uh, like I said, we're covered by the Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit. So permit reporting, the city has been working with, uh, the Washington State Department of Ecology. We'll just say ecology from now on, um, consistently the last seven months to resolve those non-compliances that you guys were told when I first started here. The city is on track to resolve all those issues. Some compliance measures then create more work afterwards. You know, you do an inspection, then you find out the issue, and then you still have to resolve that issue. So we'll follow up on those as well. The city is working with the Department of Ecology to enter what's called an agreed order, which they, they suggest here's what we're gonna require, and then we have a certain level of back and forth that we can say, hey, we're not sure if we can meet that deadline, or we do think we can meet that deadline, or maybe we've already done this, so we can adjust what's, what's required here. Dan, Mike, and I have been in those, um, meetings, uh, there and them when it comes to large decisions. When it's just me, I'm just giving them updates on what we've done. Most resolutions just require a final write-up or a standard operating procedure to make sure that the city, you know, has a mechanism in place to meet compliance in the future. And most of them are for March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, which is also the annual reporting deadline. I know you guys have seen this slide before, while ago. Uh, I thought I'd bring it back, because I thought it was a good way to go over the information, and we'll just go through it with some updates on what's been done. Like I did last time, I cut it into the five basic sections. That way, we're not reading them off one by one, and it's a little bit easier to understand. So section one, illicit discharge detection and elimination, uh, related issues. So all of those issues have been resolved by staff, through things like code updates that we've come to you about, making sure that we have easy and identifiable ways to meet compliance with eliminating illicit discharges. We set up a file system. That way, when we have a case that comes up for an illicit discharge, everything is recorded. That way, it's easy to provide at the end of the year for reporting. Um, we have our, you know, notice of violation, letter templates of varying degrees of severity. So if it's something very simple, where we just want education, we've already got, uh, template written out, so you just have to update it a little bit, really cuts down on staff time for these issues, especially if, you know, it is a larger issue that takes multiple, uh, contacts to resolve. And then, uh, city staff decisions, like looking through code and saying, okay, our code says here's our maximum amount we can find for a code violation. What do we wanna do as far as what are our fines look like? What, um, you know, how will they be enforced? And we kind of made that, uh, decision and template. That way, all cases handle the same from the start, and then if they need to be adjusted, they can be. Um, what's left is just the physical write-ups of how to respond to an illicit discharge. I have like a baseline one written. They requested just a more in-depth one. That way, if for whatever reason in the future, all the staff is gone, there's still a document that tells people how to do that thing. Um, so I'm just doing pretty detailed write-ups on how to record information, how to take the samples, where to submit them to, things like that. But that's the only thing left to do, um, shouldn't take too long. All the big, heavy stuff has already been done.
When you say an issue has been resolved or corrected, does ecology have a say in whether it's been resolved and corrected? And if so, have they said this has been resolved and corrected?
Yes, so they provided a big, long list that says, here are the issues that have been corrected. And the only outline issue, it's written out by them, is a write-up for X, and it'll tell you what it is, like for this one, uh, write-up on how to respond to illicit discharges. So we have an operating procedure.
Thanks.
But yeah, they did write out that everything else has been done, and those are updates I've given throughout the, I think we have a meeting every two weeks with ecology, so I let them know what we've done in those two weeks. Inspection and maintenance-related issues, uh, these have been met through, like I said, this was kind of the larger section, so these have been met through, um, large contracts with third-party contractors to do things like, uh, catch basin inspections for the city, uh, stormwater facility inspections, and, uh, like catch basin cleanouts. That way, they're just large things that take quite a bit of staff time. And if we put all the staff on that, then we can't necessarily do the backend things, like making those file systems, writing the SOPs, or doing the public interaction that comes after the inspection. As well as system designs, I'll show you guys here in a sec, uh, what that is up there. I know it's small. I have a bigger version next. Their electronic inspection forms, they record it, they put it as a data point on a map, so we map it out. Uh, it has all the data, date, time, all the information from the inspection, photos of the inspection, and they're all easily savable, and they're easily exportable via Excel. So it's easy for reporting, easy for data tracking, and easy for recalling information on the following inspection that'll have to be done the following year. Like I said, these are the survey forms. We have them for catch basin inspections. We have them for cleanouts, so that when contractors do our cleanouts, we get a before and after picture to ensure that the work has been done, and it puts it as a data point to that asset. So now we'll have it tracked over time. It's also gonna, um, it'll also integrate into the asset management that Dan has come here and talked to you guys about. This will be able to move right into that, so it won't hinder anything there as well. For example, just to show you what some of the work looks like, that's every catch basin inspection that's been done, uh, since I started here. It's roughly three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight, I think, somewhere around there. And there's more to be done. Next year on that contract, this was doing all residential and, uh, low-traffic roadways. We didn't wanna spend a bunch of time having them move slowly through major arterials. But as you can see, a lot of work getting done. Um, and like I said, some of those, the work that gets done creates work. So just like when you bring your car in to get checked out, they find an issue, now you gotta pay to get that issue fixed. Same thing here, so the cleaning that was, uh, done in the twenty, the inspections that were done in the twenty twenty-two inspection program, identified basins, that cleaning was done this year and will be done until February, um, February, March. And that has been understood by ecology. We asked them, hey, can we move this out just a little bit to make sure we don't drastically increase the price on a contract for the city? Uh, that was agreed upon. All those inspections that you just saw, anyone that came up with, you know, sediment past that level of sixty percent in the sump to the bottom of the invert will now be cleaned in a twenty twenty-five program. Probably here we come back for an RFQ for that one later on. But we're kind of looking through all the data right now and getting it finalized to make maintenance plans and stuff, uh, along with Keegan. One thing that we had was a structural issue severity scale. You can have different levels of severity for structural issues. A small crack on the wall is gonna be like a least severe. It's not gonna impede anything, it's just something we wanna note, and it, you know, as cars drive over, it stresses over time and might open up. Uh, two was severe, it will need some type of maintenance, and now it's kind of on the clock as out-of-maintenance standard. And there are certain standards to meet the repairs of those. Uh, there was seven hundred and thirty-six of those ones identified, and then the most severe immediate repair where it can cause, you know, a public safety issue. There were only four of those, where the repairs are already started and/or completed. Those were, um, called by the contractor and then immediately told to our maintenance department. But right now, um, there's a total of two thousand thirty-nine basins that have structural issues, and then seven hundred and thirty-six that will need maintenance, uh, in the next year. And some of those are quick mortaring to fill a crack. Some of them are, you know, replacing a cracked grate, but other ones are, we'll have to fix the riser for the base of the, um, catch basin, so it doesn't start sinking in, things like that. Are eighty percent of above-listed facilities inspected? Uh, these inspections resulted in private facilities that were found out of standard. These will require additional work through conversations with property owners, code enforcement, um, with residents to ensure that these facilities are brought back into standard. This year will be a lot of talking to residents about, okay, we inspected, here's the maintenance standards that you as a property owner are required to hold this to, and let's create a timeline that's feasible for you through either your HOA budget, your budget as a private property owner, X, Y, Z, and we'll work together to bring this back into maintenance standard.
Is there currently a template in place for like enforcement for what you just spoke of?
Yes, so we came and did those code updates with you, just, uh, stormwater code updates, which then help us for enforcement. And then we have standardized letters to be able to say, okay, here are your issues, and then we attribute them directly to the maintenance standard in the Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. And it'll say, if this occurs, then it's out of standard, here's what to do to bring it into standard. And then, you know, we can talk with them and suggest, hey, maybe you need to hire an engineer to look at this. Maybe you need to get something vectored out, maybe you need to get a pond dredged, whatever it is. That's something that we can work with the property owner to say, what's feasible for you to do, and what's the timeline and feasibility for that.
Okay, thank you.
Municipally-owned stormwater facilities inspections and maintenance. Um, we're required to inspect ninety-five percent of our municipally-owned stormwater facilities. We did them all. That way, we just know. That being said, when there are deficiencies found with those, which some of them have, like filter vaults, some of the filters are old and not working anymore, they're required to be replaced. So some more maintenance-related issues that'll take more work down the line. But at least we have them identified now, which is the first step to making a plan of action to resolve the issues. On to the next section, source control-related issues. These have been resolved through, special shout-out to Justin Horn. He helped me make our business inventory of all the businesses that are required to be inspected. Um, basically, he got a list of all the businesses, and then, uh, we categorized them using a tool from King County. That way, we have just a list, here's what needs to be inspected to meet our twenty percent of the businesses. Um, and through inspections, and then what's left, like I said, for most of these, is writing standard operating procedures. So it says, here's how you do a source control inspection, here's how you update the business inventory. Make sure you're checking with Department of Revenue annually to see if any new businesses have been, you know, applied for. Swamp and SMAP, that's Stormwater Management Plan and, uh, Stormwater Management Action Plan. And we just received the first draft of our SMAP for the Mill Creek Basin. I was reviewing that today, it's seventy-two pages, so I've been quite busy. It's hard to get through seventy-two pages of a lot of reading, but, um, that should be, uh, reviewed this week, sent and updated, hopefully, um, back soon, but we'll definitely have it back before the March thirty-first deadline for that. Um, as well as the swamp, once the SMAP is in place, then I can finalize the first draft of that, get that reviewed, uh, and then brought for parto- public participation, and then submitted by March thirty-first. Public education outreach is the only one that had, it had some more requirements based off of how the last permit worked and how this next permit works. So last permit, five years, was kind of incrementally creating a program over five years. We didn't do that, so when I started, we just needed something in place to meet that requirement, which I did. And it, it did help citizens understand the general idea of illicit discharges. We've gotten a lot more calls from residents. I got a call this week, 'cause someone's neighbor spilled paint on the road. Don't think we would've got that prior to us giving that education out to people. So, uh, it did help, but we wanted to adjust that public education strategy based on the requirements for the next permit. You're required to have a behavioral change program that has social marketing basis. You have to review it, redesign it, and then make it better and continue it. The way that I made that illicit discharge outreach program, it just wasn't gonna be able to meet those requirements. We've talked with, um, communications, marketing about what our plan is to do for this next permit cycle. We've also talked to ecology and said, hey, this is what our plan is. Um, they allowed us, they were requiring the plan to be done by January fifteenth, and I was like, that's just not possible for staff. So, uh, we worked with them, we got it adjusted to a time, um, after talking with communications and marketing that they said we can do, I thought confidently that we could do that. Uh, and it's gonna focus on pet waste. We have a lot of walking trails here. We have, um, our TMDL for North Creek is, has a focus for pet waste, so it allows us to kind of meet a lot of requirements and help the city in an area where, you know, we have an issue that we've seen. And our stewardship opportunities have been met by providing cleanup days, by providing, um, adopt a street. And those are things that communications and marketing have done. Thank you to Jody and everyone over there. This is just a recap of what I just said. The cursory program was put in place to meet requirements. This is just a recap of what I just said, the cursory program was put in place to meet requirements at a bare minimum. And increase understanding of what's not allowed in our storm system, we did that. But the new permit has updated requirements, require a little bit more. And measurable behavior change um. And this is the only item on there that didn't have the March thirty first twenty twenty five deadline. Because it uses the new permits deadlines that are put into it, so. We don't need to get into the minutia of that unless uh you guys want to. So recap, we have fifteen uh G twenty non-compliances, all of which are on track to be resolved. By the timeline set by ecology in the agreed order, the agreed order hasn't been finalized, but we've had our meetings about. What do we feel comfortable as far as deadlines and everything, next step is it'll get moved to like a legal process. And grant will be brought in at that point um. By resolving these non-compliances by the deadlines set by ecology, the city will fulfill the agreed order and avoid financial penalty. Uh, systems have been built by staff to ensure ease of continued compliance for the city for the future. Um, significant operations and maintenance programs will be needed to ensure no other non-compliances in the future. And a significant increase to our education outreach behavioral change program will be needed to ensure no. Non-compliances in the future, and I just also wanted to thank all the staff that have helped me. Since I've started here, I've had to lean on a lot of people, so communications and marketing, thank all them. Keegan, Jason, all of our maintenance department, I know I call them almost every day with a new, a new thing, so. Thank you to all of them for working together to resolve these issues, thank you.
Great, any questions? Councilmember Duque.
I like how we're going at the start of the year that you're looking at me, hi Ryan.
Well, you're fast on the lights this year.
Just getting on it, I'm, it's my new goal, thank you so much for the presentation, yeah, I told you it was, right?
Like Family Feud.
Um, I really appreciate this and I appreciate all the, obviously, you know, it takes a lot of people to get us in place and so I, I really appreciate. You and your direction and making sure that we get these things accomplished and, and you're coming in, explaining it to us in a way that's very clear for anyone. Listening in to understand where we are in the process and for us also to, if we get a question about it, we can say where we're, where we're at, so I thank you for that. Um, one was a question that hmm. I don't know if it fits here and maybe it's a separate conversation with you, and then the other was um a comment based off of what you shared. So the first is unlike pages nine and ten, um, when you were looking at um the catch basins. And showing us all the ones that you've done and that there's still more to be done, I'm just curious about. The ones that we, that are privately managed by like HOAs cuz they control their own streets. Um, what is that feedback loop or conversations with like those HOAs or those like? Cuz I, I know that next slide you talked about the property owners, when there were things that you did see, but for those catch patients, I don't believe you're um. Your, for the ones that are private roads, I don't believe you are actually um checking them, correct? Like you're relying on that HOA to do the inspections and then do you receive reports from it?
No, so that would be part of like um.
Are there even any catch patients in the private roads that would tie into our system?
There, there are, there are some throughout the city that tie into our system, our system kind of goes. Weaves in and out of public to private to public, so um I try to be as in contact with anyone. I've given Hillary my number, said if there's any other HOA people you know, give that to me, um, but as far as those inspections, those um. With the percentages we were required to meet, I thought the best way to go about that. Was not to focus on those and focus on our larger stormwater facilities um. Cuz we do have like a, a requirement for inspection um. Of our catch basins in the city or our outfalls and. Normally, we would do outfalls because there's less of those to inspect, but we already had to do the catch basin inspections. And. We wanted to focus on the public ones first so that we. So that we're making sure we're taking care of what we're responsible for, we ask you guys, you know, the public to do things that we haven't done. You know, um, and next year they'll be part of an inspection program, they'll be notified to the HOAs. Just like they'll be notified for their stormwater ponds, vaults, detention pipes, things like that.
Fantastic, yeah, and I, I, that's what I assumed, that that's, it wasn't part of this, I was more curious what it, what that path is for those um. For those ones, and I say this as someone who lives in an HOA, where we do manage our own roads. And you know, that's part of what we do and we pay for our own uh catch recent like inspections that we've had to do, and so I was curious. Should we be sending that, like, is there a conversation that way, and maybe it's already been handled with our property management? But it made me think, cuz there are a few communities in Mill Creek where the roads are private, um, where that might also be um, okay. Happy to follow up with any like.
And per our permit, there's no requirement for them to submit it to us, if an HOA sent me a report like. I got the maintenance report from MCCA. Very happy I got it, it was really helpful, it's not required, so I'm not gonna. Give the public any requirements that aren't legally required by our permit, that way we're not asking them to do things that they, you know. Don't need to do, uh, with that being said, I always try to be as communicative as possible. If someone has a problem with their catch basin, they can always reach out, talk to the city, I'm more than happy to talk to them, I've had HOA. Uh, you know, treasures and things call us and say, hey, what about this pond, what about this basin? I always set up a time to go out there with them, talk over the issues. Sometimes they're happy to hear what I have to say, sometimes not, but by the end, we usually meet somewhere in the middle where we have an understanding about what needs to be done. And how to work together to achieve that single.
Perfect, thank you, I, I really appreciate the additional information for me, um, and then the second is, you mentioned in terms of the um education aspect, that last. Public education and outreach, and I have, um, I wrote down when you said it, um, the adopter street as being part of that, so I, and I, I just may have. Missed this, or it's no longer on a trial basis, the adopter street program and it is ongoing. Okay, fantastic, and I'm sure we'll get a recap on that, that was it, so just confirmation that the adopter street is something that we are moving forward with, I know that the.
That's not necessarily gonna be our next public education outreach to meet the permit, but it was what we. Tied into to meet permit requirements as they were.
And I, I appreciate that we had something that we were doing before. We needed something, does that make sense? Like, it's like, look, we're already headed in the right direction, we just didn't know, maybe it was uh, um, there, there were other. Support of why to do it and obviously we have groups are that are working hard on continuing to implement it, so it's just. It's good to hear that that was the right direction, so thank you for um, um, including that as part of that aspect.
Yeah, no problem.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you, mayor, um, thank you for coming and giving us um this detailed information, I think it's extremely helpful. Because the stormwater management is really important, it's really important for the environment. And it's um a lot for us to grasp and understand and it's helpful for the public to start to understand. Um, what else it involves too, and um I wanna say as well that I'm really excited. That we are picking to use for our education piece to change behavior, the pet waste and I know. Some Girl Scouts, who are gonna be very excited, um, that that is what we have decided to do. And um, I do hear lots of people um tying into that complaining about. Dog poop being on the sidewalks and things like that, so hopefully by utilizing this education piece. We will help change some behaviors so that they will um start cleaning up after their pets a little better, so thank you for that information.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Thanks, mayor, um, yeah, real brief, um, Councilmember Duque, um, pretty much asked my question about the HOA, so I've got that answer, but I wanted to. Share one quick comment is, first of all, I do appreciate your zeal on the matter and I know you came up here and make it very friendly and. Positive and something that normally wouldn't be on the map in most cities, but so I appreciate you for that, but. More importantly, I appreciate you to the city at your, one of your bullets, the city is on track to resolve. All of these issues and I think that's incredible, so kudos to you, kudos to your team and everybody involved, thank you.
So, um, great job putting all this together, on, um, I think it's page ten, the um catch basin inspections and cleaning. The severe's. So, um, when, when would you anticipate, right, like which quarter, would you anticipate having kind of a summary of what those are gonna look like and the cost to remediate?
So I'm currently, there's. You know, two thousand thirty nine basins and I have to go in each one and look at the photos just to confirm what's written and then give our suggested action. I'm. Yeah, probably like five eighths through that list, um. And then once I have that completed, I'll send that over to Keegan since he's uh there. The maintenance department just to make sure that he says, you know, yeah, those corrections make sense, that maintenance makes sense. Um, and then we kind of go from there, see what we have the ability to do in our maintenance department. Remove those basins, then we'll have a total that we can send via the ILA to Snohomish County. And say, hey, here's a whole list of these, which ones can you guys take off our hands? So then we cut it from our maintenance, cut it from Snohomish County, and whatever's left on that, then we'll go out for an RFQ and then that. Would kind of be the time that we'll be thinking about cost, I mean. Next quarter, we'll probably have like a rough estimate of what those costs will be, but. They can change depending on length of time, severity, something happens in between, um, but. I would say. Probably next quarter, we'd have an ability to say, here's what we're thinking the cost is.
Okay.
But it's not necessarily exact until we get those other ones figured out.
But we'll have a directional number halfway through the year, maybe something.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And then on your, on your summary page, if you could pull that, well, yeah, if that could get pulled up. There were two things that you said that were significantly, that needed significant um addressing. And whenever I see that word, uh, I start thinking cost, significant operation. Um, maintenance programs will need to ensure that no further compliance, non-compliance in the future, significant increase in, in education. Is significant meaning beyond the capacity of existing staff or is just?
Uh, no, just in, in comparison to what was done previously, like. Like I said, for that education outreach program, I kept it pretty bare bones, just so we met those requirements and then I still had time to, you know. Resolve these other issues, but now. In comparison to that one, this program will have a lot more, but um, we already have that built into the budget, um. So I have, you know, here's the cost of our education outreach program, we can design around that so that we're not going over in costs and then. This time we'll have a lot more of communications and marketing working with me versus the last one, I was like, we're just gonna do this, it'll meet the requirement, I've got other things I gotta figure out. But now we'll have something that we can make a little bit more robust, help an actual issue that's specific to the city. And uh, it shouldn't take massively more effort or massively more budget to resolve. Um, the one that may have a larger budgetary cost, not more than what we have. Allotted, but just a larger cost upcoming will be those maintenance items, just because. The nature of those maintenance items are somewhat more costly than, you know. Going out and handing someone a flyer is easier than re-mortaring a catch basin, just costs a little bit more, but um. Looking at those, when I made that scale, I only did three and then going back through, I was like, there's a lot of difference in this too. Whether it be like a small crack that's pretty easy to mortar up, that's a pretty cost effective solution. Versus some other ones have larger issues that are a little bit more costly, but I would say the majority are. Quicker fixes than they are large fixes, but um. You gotta do them now before they become worse issues down the road, but I don't think it should be a huge extra cost.
All right, we'll hold you to it, thank you.
It might be helpful for a future discussion when we talk about. The budget, clarifying what money is coming out of the bond that funds the surface water activities and how much comes out of the, if any, out of the general fund. Just so we're all clear on where that money is coming from.
Next time I'll, I'll make sure to specify, but it's for the four oh one, uh, specific for stormwater.
Right, it's a stormwater fund, the bond that we pay for through our rates, any other questions? Oh, Mike?
Yeah, if I could make a few comments, you know, Reese thanked a lot of people, I wanna thank Reese, he's done a phenomenal job in the last, however long he's been here, I guess it's seven months. You know, I, I spent many years as a council member, didn't really understand that we were operating a utility. Because we don't do water and sewer, we don't think about utility operation as a council. And we had Marcy Chu for many years just kind of quietly did things, well, the permit requirements escalated over time. And we lost our way a number of years ago, and you remember when I first switched to staff in twenty twenty, we were in trouble with ecology. We kind of dodged a bullet then, did some work, but we didn't really focus enough on the operations and maintenance part of it, we got too involved in the. In the science part of it, and the, the breath of fresh air that, that uh group, that Reese has brought for us. Is his experience from federal way and his, his willingness to just roll up his sleeves and jump in and do incredible things. To get us back into an operations mode, so I thank him for doing that. Uh, we will find opportunities for us to not have to hire people to do things in the future, but right now we've got money. In the four oh one fund to spend on things like inspections and clean out and fixing catch basins. But I think over time you will see us come back with business case explanations where it's cheaper to have a full-time. Person doing this in twenty twenty seven instead of contracting out in twenty five and twenty six, so you'll hear more from us over time, but I wanna thank. Uh, Reese in particular for doing a phenomenal job of just forcing us to move forward in a very, uh, is, with a lot of zeal, I think. Councilmember Cavallari's word is right, a lot of zeal and enthusiasm for what he does, it's appreciated, thanks.
Any final comments or questions? City manager?
Reese, could you give an example or uh an estimate of what the fines we avoided, um, just on a general scale?
When we talked with them, we wanted to see what the, the amount was uh for the fine and. They didn't have a total number, but it was uh ten thousand dollars per day, per fine, so one day. Be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then. If you extrapolate on, it's quite a lot, millions of dollars, but um luckily, we're looking like we're gonna avoid it. Dodge and punch left and right.
Great work by you and everyone, so appreciate the update. Okay, we have no old business on the agenda this evening, so that brings us to our one item of new business, an ordinance related to municipal code amendment to update board and commission position requirements. Mr. Garcia.
Good afternoon, council into our community, I have just a quick um code update, this is just more administrative um for us. But in Mill Creek Municipal Code, section four point zero two point zero seven zero. It currently states that we, each board of commission has to have a chair, a vice chair and a secretary. As you know, most of our board of commissions just have a chair and a vice chair right now. Um, the secretary role is mostly like taking the minutes, uploading that to our website. Um, putting the Zoom links on there, getting the material together and we know from our experiences on these board of commissions that. That's really done by our staff liaison, that's a really um, um, um. A burden to ask of a volunteer and to give them that kind of access like to the city website, so um, we wanted to just kind of clean that up a little bit and remove that requirement and. Um, and just say that we will have just a, a chair and a vice chair with this ordinance and then. With this approval and your consideration, our next step would be to have, to take some bylaws to each board and commission, um, we already have that. Created, but we just needed to fix this first, um, and we will take that to planning commission first, and so they'll pass those bylaws. And then we'll bring that back here to council for a final approval and then those can go on to our webpages, so each board of commission will have bylaws as well. That is it for me.
Thank you, Adrian, any questions? Any motions?
I'll make a motion, but I guess this kind of falls to what um Jeff presented earlier of, of the kind of cleanup. Uh, that we can expect on a yearly basis, something like this, so uh, on that base, sure. Make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the Mill Creek Municipal Code to remove the position of secretary from boards and commissions and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes unanimously, thank you, Adrian. Okay, we have no new initiatives tonight, so it brings us to our two, I think will be brief study sessions. The first meeting in the year per our governance manual, we go. The first meeting in the year, per our governance manual, we go through our boards and commissions assignments, so Leah, were you gonna put the? Council liaison selection or positions up? So I think we can just walk through these one by one and see if the whoever. Whoever was assigned wants to remain in that position for the coming year um. Yeah.
I wanted to um, I wanted to ask a question first, um before we started going through and clarify. Um, if the meeting times are the are the current meeting times, cause I know. Um, we had talked during the year about changing some of the board, like the arts, I don't know if it was the arts beautification or the parks board. So I wasn't sure if these were the the times they're meeting now, or if these were the times that they were meeting before, can anybody?
The time might be slightly off.
Do you know what the time is?
Before art board, let me check one second.
Is there one?
It's a correct for AMB. Hmm, it is correct for AMB.
It's correct for AMB. And the parks is correct as well, okay, then it's probably, you probably have updated, then that was my question, so I wasn't sure if it had the accurate, thank you.
Okay, so let's walk through these AMB board, Mister Steckler.
Love to stay onto that one.
Parks and Rec.
Uh, are we doing alternates for each one?
Um, we typically, we, that's right, we typically do and we don't show on here who's the.
Twenty twenty four alternate.
Beautification.
Yay.
Let it again?
Yeah.
So Steckler and Allison for AMB Parks and Rec, Melissa?
I'd like to keep it if there's no um objections.
Who who is the alternate?
I was the, I was the alternate.
You're gonna stay?
Yeah.
Uh, left board Connie and John?
Although I'd I'd recommend that uh if it's okay with council member Allison, that she'd be the primary and I'd be the secondary on left board going forward.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't believe we had a alter or an alter alternate for that.
Mayor?
Yep.
Um, I believe uh under the requirements of the left board, there have to be two members of the council serving as members of the left board.
Okay, so do we need an alternate, have we had an alternate designated?
We have not, we just had the two of us, but if that's the case, then we just continue with the two of us, that's fine.
You you can't have an alternate by the bylaws for the left committee.
Okay.
You cannot.
You cannot.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, uh planning commission, Sean. Design review board.
Who's his alternate?
Who is the alternate Leah in twenty four, do we know? On the planning commission?
I don't think there was one. Remember that for planning commission, design review board, there are less liaisons and more. I mean, they're they're liaisons, but they're a little bit different, cause those are in code in a different way.
Correct.
So I think Councilmember Paddock was the only one.
Is there, is everyone comfortable leaving it that way?
Uh, I was gonna suggest, since if it's the third Thursday, I mean, I would accept an alternate spot if that works.
That's fine, okay, thanks Vince, designer review board, Melissa.
I'd be happy to continue it.
Are you free on the first Thursday of the month too Vince?
I can step up the alternate.
Okay, so Sean will be the alternate, youth advisory board, I don't think we've typically had a.
We had like two or three years ago, but then we stopped, but do we want someone on there?
Yeah, does does there anyone have a strong desire to be a liaison to that?
What time is the meeting?
There's always a bit of a hiccup with this, that I it always fell under the guise of the um park board, so. Uh, we we morphed into something else, I think a couple of years ago, I I'm not speaking for everybody, but I was comfortable with them. Um, reporting to Parks and Rec.
Explain by me.
Yeah, I think.
They were, they report to Parks and Rec board, oh, oh.
We did it differently for just a little while before COVID, and since COVID, we um, cause they were doing a thing where they were having a whole government thing and. And meeting and um and I was talking to them and doing things with them, but then since COVID. Um, and when we came back, we haven't been doing any of those things, they haven't been doing those things, so.
So should we leave it blank for twenty five like it was in twenty four?
Could we check to see with Jody if there's a, if there's like an interest, cause maybe it's a a quarterly, not attending each month.
Someone's interested, we can always put you down.
Yeah, I am, I'm I'm interested.
I would be interested in in helping with the youth advisory in one capacity the other.
And and an option is um that I, someone said, or just sent me, is that we could rotate it too, it could be one of those where like we. We see when they need, when they would like us to be there, and then we can just check to see who's available. You know, if it's a quarterly basis or thing like that.
I was doing it before, so if we're gonna go back to having one, I would like to be the person again. But I didn't, it got to a point where it wasn't being utilized, so.
So we could, could we table this until we find out what they, what they want, is it what what we want, like do we, is it because we want someone to be there?
Yeah, that's. Did, did you have an objection to them um like being part of your park and rec board meeting?
No, they're.
Beginning, I I, so I I did that for, I think for almost ten or twelve years and it really worked seamless, in my opinion, but.
We have at Parks and Rec board meetings, I wanna confirm, there is a representative. From the youth advisory board who comes to the whole Parks and Rec board and gives an update on what's happening. My comment here is if we thought there was an opportunity or something we can talk with Jody about, of having someone from here, just being there, cause we're not. Running the meeting, we're just being that representative, we're just being uh um a resource for them at the meeting. Um, which is different than their reporting to us, I'm happy either way. And would like to, would throw my name in for youth advisory board, I I don't anticipate they'd want us there every meeting, it would, I could see us. It being like, is there a a representative to check in with Jody, um the staff representative to see if there's. Opportunities for us to attend.
How about we put down as needed, Mayor Pro Tem will be the primary and you'll be the backup.
Is that okay with John?
Okay, absolutely.
Okay.
Good call.
Okay, SC, uh, no, the AHA Affordable Housing Alliance for Housing Affordability, Stephanie, you wanna remain on that?
Well, no, we still had me on there, cause nobody else could do it, but I can't do, really do it last time, so. Um, that's an excellent question.
It usually precedes Snohomish County tomorrow, and I think part of our discussion was earlier whether or not we needed a council representative on that, opposed to. Having was previously Mike or now Jeff represent that.
Jeff, do you know what time it's it is meeting, because one of the problems I'm running to choose is Snohomish County tomorrow changed the time that it's meeting, and so. That is a problem now with the other meeting.
When I looked on their website, it didn't show any meeting times for this year or twenty twenty four.
They may not admit.
My recollection is that when Tom Rogers was with us, he went to that.
Yeah.
We didn't see a whole lot of value, but it was important to be involved, and so Tom did it, I don't think council members were ever involved, I don't think it was voting kinds of responsibilities. I, to be honest, I've never been to a meeting and Jeff is probably the right conduit. But I don't know that we need a council member, maybe we just have, maybe we have Jeff figure it out and decide what we. If he needs help from council or what their appropriate role is after he's been, gets involved.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, let's see, have Jeff go to the first few, if there are any, and have him report back if he needs one of us to. Be attend one of the meetings going forward.
While while we have grant here, is it required to have a council member, just out of curiosity?
I don't believe so.
We ha- we did not have one in twenty twenty four, set on there.
So we will not have one for twenty twenty five unless Jeff reports back to us in the coming months and we need to designate someone.
You maybe put TBD in that box?
That'd be good.
Something.
Yep. Okay, uh, Wyra eight, also known as the low person on the totem pole. Sean does such a great job of reporting. Mm-hmm, have they been meeting monthly, and it is virtual now, and in past years, it was in person and it was kind of a hassle, cause it was down in Bellevue or something like that.
Yeah, that was.
No one, no one wants to follow Sean. Yeah, I I wouldn't wanna go, no.
I want to confirm.
Pardon?
No, I wanna confirm, I did reach out to Sean to see if he wanted me to take it on, since I technically never. Experienced that joy, he said he was okay with it, but I do want.
Okay with you experiencing that joy or?
With him still keeping it on, but I wanted to make sure you guys did know, I acknowledge my privilege that I just came.
How about we put you down as the alternate?
Put me down as the alternate, and I'm happy to support.
And and for the records, there will be a new low person on the totem pole.
Yes, there will.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Yeah.
So just an FYI, prior to being all virtual, it used to be right in that hub of where four oh five meets five twenty during rush hours, starting at four thirty.
That was the problem.
Six thirty, and it was the worst.
That was the problem, gotcha, thank you.
Okay, Snohomish County tomorrow, leave it as Stephanie as the prime and Sean as the alternate.
Yes, please.
Um, South County Fire, that's not a designated position, I'm not sure we need to have that on the assignment list.
So we can remove it.
Uh, same.
We left it blank last year.
Yeah, m- same with the Mill Creek Chamber.
If, so I guess my question for you is, do you want to remove it from this list completely?
Yes, we we should, I mean, cause we don't technically have an assignment unless we just wanna keep track of the stuff we're involved with, but.
Yeah, cause my only edit was gonna be if you, if we were keeping Mill Creek Chamber of Commerce, to change the date, cause it's just the lunch and learn, which is the Thursday. Their their general meetings are the third Thursday, a third Tuesday um from um uh eleven thirty, and it's at the City Hall North. And I was going to just flag for everyone that in conversations I've had with our city manager. And with the um with Mill Creek Chamber of Commerce, um our communications. Um, Jody has been attending also certain meetings there, so I was just gonna say, if this stays on here, I don't, I think all invited is absolutely okay. But it should say Martin and it should say um, you know, uh Jody or uh his representative, cause it might. It might switch around there, so that way you guys do know that multiple um city staff people do communicate with them, whatever.
After the meeting, can you get with Leon the date and time that we should reference in the chart?
Happy to do so, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, technical advisory committee for affordable housing, but I don't know what that is, quite honestly.
So remove it?
Yeah, I think we can take that one off, I'm not sure what that is anymore. Uh, Snow uh Snow one oh one, Snow Cal one oh one, Vince still?
Can I, I'm probably gonna need to check with work, they've moved it back from ten thirty now to starting at eight thirty, so it complicates it a bit for me.
Okay, should we defer this one to let you check on that?
Give me a week, please.
Okay. Uh, I don't know that we need to have the PSRC General Assembly on here, cause that's an all invited and it fluctuates, so I'm not sure, we designate someone prior to that meeting. So I think we could take that one off the list. Um, community transit, I think that's probably appropriate for a staff to attend, so. I'm not sure if Mr. Ryan has been to one yet, but if not, he'll get to attend one soon.
Be aware that, be aware, after you get a new election next year. Then community transit goes out and looks for representatives from medium sized cities, so the city will appoint someone to go to their meeting. And vote for themselves or vote for somebody else to represent medium sized cities, that's why, but that will happen in January, you'll get a request from CT to do that.
Is that appointment made through Snohomish County Cities?
No, an appointment is made by Snohomish County, excuse me, community transit, each city sends a person to the meeting. And then you go off in little groups for medium sized cities, small cities and large cities, and the group decides who gets appointed.
Yeah.
Okay. And then last is our finance and legislative committees, any changes? Everyone good with continuing those roles? Okay. Leah, did you get all that, I've got some notes and um Melissa will get with you on the timing and. Date of the month for the chamber lunch.
Yes, I got most of it, I know that the last two are going to stay as they were, and I've highlighted the items that we're going to remove. From the council liaison assignment list.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, our other study session is the annual proclamations, uh, the second page. Is the excerpt from our governance manual on the process, which we try to set the proclamations for the year. Uh, in January ahead of time, so we're not continually continually entertaining requests throughout the year. So on the first page, on the middle right of the, where it says proposed proclamation, that should be proposed new proclamations for twenty twenty five. That Mayor Pro Tem, myself and city manager um vetted and are recommending we add this year, so. There's no objections, that's what we proceed with for the year.
So so I'm okay with the last uh question though, is some of us have written some of the proclamations, are we gonna actively participate still, or are they gonna be? Um, pre-drafted?
No, we continue to, it'd be on the on the fly as needed, many of these proclamations, the ones that are already down. Are ones we've done in the past and they don't seem to change much, so not sure if we've got to the point of drafting. Any of the new ones, but if you're interested in providing some input, it'd be welcome.
Happy to do so, thank you.
With the request for the Hindu Heritage Month, they provided um some wording for a proclamation. The other ones I haven't seen any wording for.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the month of the other one, we can find that out.
Okay, do we have any background on the the this one, performance, Sean John?
I'd ask this, I'm trying to remember what the background is on that.
We don't, well, I don't know the exact background on that, but I just wanted to make. Um, one thing public is that we're, we brought these forward, these proclamations, not because we're recommending these, but we were. Uh, asked to add these to the to the list staff was, so some of us have not um ventured into learning. Uh, about the the history of some of these um. Proclamations and what that entails, so we wanted to leave it up to council to to decide that, if unless you want us to come back.
If you have a question on one of them, why don't you, we can highlight one if we wanna give some more thought to it and.
Or at least find out what it is, like, the others seem pretty self-explanatory, but.
Yeah, well, if for that one, would you like us to bring back a little information on that?
Sure.
Okay, we'll do that. On on the one proposed new one for the Shin Shin Yun, uh, council member Paddock would like a little more information about that organization.
I see it on, I see it on TV as like a dance.
Yeah, it is, it's the Chinese jant troupe.
I don't, I never see it.
Yeah, I would like more information.
Maybe the same on Financial Literacy Week as well, please.
Okay. We can do that, Gazzaro, do you okay?
Yes, so I wanna confirm, cause I didn't, thank you very much for exhibiting, I I think that's very helpful, so if I had wanted to have any proposed. Proclamations, then two weeks before this meeting, I needed to have submitted. Um, I I or needed to make a request, submitting a copy of the proposed proclamation to the city clerk. So I missed my deadline.
Which is the one you?
Huh, well, I have other, I I looked at the list when it came out, and I was like, oh, what are the other, I like, I have other proclamations not listed here. So I thought in this meeting, I could bring them up as suggestions.
Why don't you provide, why don't you provide them to the, me and the Mayor Pro Tem and we'll take it up with the city manager at our next meeting?
Fantastic, so that's why I wanted to confirm, but in the future, the base, the way it's written, I should keep in mind. In December, I should have submitted for you guys to take a look at.
That's what we're trying to do, but we'll give a two week grace period this year.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay, I think we've gotten, we have our direction on that for now. Have no items on the consent agenda, brings us to reports, city manager?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, the first report is uh just a shout out and thanks to the project lead Adrian, uh our management analyst for. Getting the uh encampment slash debris project uh going and and. Um, cleaned up most of the encampments and and if there were any out there, and I don't think there were any out there, but mostly debris, as as we mentioned in. Uh, prior council meeting that uh in a lot of different properties, so. Um, there are only two remaining areas where there is debris left that we have to work, one with wash dot, and I I can't recall the other one now. But we've got majority of them cleaned up and and a plan in place to to monitor these same areas over time. Uh, the private property owners are were well engaged and more than willing to help in many cases of, as we reported in the past and um. Um. Yeah, things are going good moving forward in terms of uh encampment and debris. Uh, along the same line, the vegetation in the rideaways, uh, we had plantscapes, our vendor go through. Uh, not many areas across the city, um and uh again, in in many cases too, when we send that, sent out letters. These private property owners were very receptive to uh taking care of many of these areas by themselves, uh. Whether they were HOAs and um or private, other private residences, so. Um, and we did pay for plantscapes to go through these other areas to clean up as well, so. Um, but both projects went well, um so hats off to Adrian Keegan and our deputy director of public safety for. Um, all working together to make sure that uh moving direction, in the right direction of of hitting all this deferred maintenance and. Um, going forward, we're gonna keep it up, so.
Uh, just a second, I think there's a couple of questions, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
Um, thank you, mayor, um, so city manager, does this mean that we have cleaned up the area? Um, behind the trail um by rivers crossing where people have been um complaining? And we've been having comments, chief is nodding.
I believe that is the wash uh property that uh Keegan, yes. I believe that is the wash, uh, property that, uh, Keegan, yes, that's correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Cavalieri?
Thanks, Mayor. That was, um, part of my question also. Second was, um, did we ever, I know we discussed uh, whether it was having city staff doing it, uh, finding a reliable vendor for encampment cleanup. Whi, which one, which direction did we end up going?
Uh, a vendor went, went through and, and helped us on that.
All right, thank you.
On all those that we sent out letters to, in addition to other areas as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Steckler?
Just a quick question. I had a, a couple of comments over the holiday about the, um, sports park cleanup area around the sign. Two of the three vantage points, the sign is covered by vegetation, only one is it clear, so uh, the, um, sports park needs to, needs a, a major recutting around our, our signs, vegetation's grown over it. I think it's, uh, northbound is the only way you can see the sign right now, southbound and, um, uh, westbound, it's covered by vegetation. Just, FYI.
Another question, they got one more report. Well, it's actually just a reminder, a motion to, uh, for a special meeting on the twenty-first of this month.
For the first night of the retreat?
First night of the retreat, which will be the third, uh, Tuesday of the month.
So can we have a motion to schedule a special meeting for, uh, what day is that?
Twenty-first.
January twenty-first.
Motion to.
January.
Yeah, motion to establish a special meeting on January twenty-first?
Second.
For the council.
Is there any discussion? Here and now, those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? We have our special meeting.
Next report by our MNO manager, uh, to, uh, report on some surplus equipment for, uh, would that will be on consent next week.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Potem and council, uh, just wanted to bring to you, next week is gonna be coming, um, a list of equipment that we're trying to surplus, that's gonna be on consent. Uh, the equipment that's listed is the equipment that was replaced with our ARPA funding that was approved, um, by you all. Uh, there will be one more piece added on there. I was looking at it tonight. Uh, the players' ranger, which we added a little bit late, uh, in that ARPA, due to it not running, that two thousand four players' ranger will be added to that list. Uh, but just want to notify you, that's going to be coming up for consent on the, uh, the next meeting.
Yeah, before I get to John's question, what we're trying to do with some of this more mundane administrative stuff is alert you that it's coming, and if you have questions during the week, you can feel free to ask staff, um, so that if we needed to remove it from the consent agenda, we can and have discussion, but otherwise, we'll move it through on a consent agenda. Councilmember Steckler, you had a question?
Quick question about surplus equipment. Do we have a policy about, I know we've been sending it all to, uh, wholesalers, but do we ever have a policy about making that available to our citizens or staff or people?
Uh, per our policy, it has to go to auction.
Yeah.
I believe per our code, so it does go up to auction. I mean, the community, I believe, has the ability to sign up and purchase it through the auction if they would like. But they all, they all do go to auction.
City policy is everything goes to auction.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Keegan.
Thank you.
And just a happy new year to everyone. This will be a good year for staff and council, so thank you, Mayor. No other, no other reports.
And thank you, just a couple of things. I hope everyone had a great holiday and a new year. I, of all places, was in New Orleans for New Year's, so that was an interesting time. Uh, for the retreat, just a note that we will have dinner rather than snacks for the two nights of the retreat, so we'll keep everyone fed and alert and hopefully keep everyone from getting angry. Uh, Mayor Potem, any report tonight?
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Cavalieri?
No report, but when you told me that you were going to New Orleans and you, that you were in New Orleans, it never made sense to me, or it didn't, clock didn't strike twelve in my head, so, uh, thankfully you made it out of there alive and in one piece, you and your family. I'm glad God brought you back home. Happy New Year.
Councilmember Steckler?
Uh, just a quick announcement, the, uh, Mill Creek Kiwanis Club is putting on a special bingo night on, um, Wednesday, January twenty-ninth at six PM here at, uh, City Hall North to, um, just to generate, uh, excitement and, uh, about future projects and potential membership, so. Any, anybody from the city or anybody who's listening in our notes or on, uh, are more than welcome to attend, but I wanted to get the word out on that. Thanks.
Councilmember Allison?
No report.
Councilmember Duque?
Yes, I actually don't recall if we met after this, but I attended the Everett Public Schools Community Leaders.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that.
Yeah, I, I was, when both of you didn't mention, I was like, wait, did we meet before or, or after that? Um, and so, um, it was a good presentation. Uh, we had various, um, of the, um, staff from the Everett Public Schools give us their state of the union, right, of what's going on with the Everett Public Schools. So if anyone has any questions or, you know, just interested in what's going on, I'm happy to share the information I have. Uh, the mayor was there, and so was the Mayor Potem, so if you guys are, are looking to, for that no, um, knowledge about it. I will say there was a slide that mentioned the, um, the.
Superintendent.
Correct, over at, um, uh, over at Heatherwood, and I giggled, and I mean that, I actually giggled as I saw the slide and looked at the two of them.
The superintendent caught my eye when that slide came up.
Did he? He caught your eye? So anyways, I just wanted to say that was listed there, that was something that they did take care of. I also wanted to share, I, I can't find the notes. I had a big number, because they actually gave us, you know, it's their state of the union. They gave us a big, um, the, about how we always think of the school buildings and the school as just during the school academic year, but there's so much work that happens facilities-wise, of course academically for teachers and, you know, prepping for the year, but so much work that happens facilities and in terms of work numbers and work orders and all that kind of stuff, um, um, during the summer, so that's something, you know, as we think about, um, the spaces that we have. I thought it was a really good meeting, and I really encourage all of us, um, to attend. It wasn't until I was there that I remembered, huh, for Everett School District, the cities that are represented, it's Everett and us, because the, as, the rest is unincorporated areas, and it's huge, so I thought it was really good that there were three of us, um, there to hear from it. So again, if you have any questions. And then, um, I wanted to flag, there was a chamber board meeting, um, Mill Creek, um, Chamber of Commerce Board meeting today, and just the update, uh, a hundred and seventy-five members. So if you recall, just a couple of years ago, it's like sixty, things like that, so it's a, it's a big deal. You know, those numbers are, are in flux, and they're fully working towards what's gonna happen with the festival and all that stuff, but I just wanted to share that highlight for you. Thank you.
The only thing I'd add on the school district, it was a little more than a, um, state of the district. It was laying the groundwork for a bond measure. They're starting the public relations campaign for a bond measure in a couple of years.
Definitely.
So that, that was, I think, motive to show how well they're doing with the district now, to build support for the bond measure.
Yes, uh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Paddock?
Uh, oh, one question and one comment. Um, at the Chamber of Commerce, uh, a holiday party, I think it was one sixty-four. So, uh, it's grown in just one month, and that's pretty impressive. Great, great work.
Want to know one of the newest visionary members, Cirque du Soleil?
Yes.
I know. We are, we also made that face. We're like, what?
Are they coming to Mill Creek?
They're not, but, um, I'm gonna follow up with some additional information, um, about Cirque du Soleil, but it was just really exciting, because it, it, it just, it shows that, um, where, eh, you know, there, there's, when you look at the chamber membership, a lot of the businesses are not actually in Mill Creek. And, but that tells you the power of like, being part of the branding of Mill Creek. So I don't see it as a negative necessarily or a positive, it's just like something to consider and think about. So, yeah, so at today's meeting, we talked about Cirque du Soleil, and even the other visionary member, that's the highest level for payment, uh, so that's the one they signed up for, is a, um, is someone who has like an entertainment, like vocal lessons, so it, it really, it, it really runs the gamut of like what we have as part of a chamber, and they're just, their offices are just a little bit north of, of Mill Creek proper, but still part of the community, so it's not just our, um, our lines when it comes to our economic, um, uh, community.
Well, and on that point, this might be a discussion for the retreat, but I, I can't remember if this was before or after our last meeting, I did the ribbon cutting for the Tutu Dance School.
Oh, we forgot to mention.
Which is across the street from the Swim Club, which is a couple of doors down from the Hot Yoga, which, I mean, we have, we've talked in the past about the act, active community and the sports athletic oriented city, and we've got arena sports, we've got the parks and sports parks and swim clubs, but anyway.
Yeah.
And there's another ribbon coming, cutting coming up in the eighteenth, I forget what it is.
Yes, uh, Sammy's Nails, it's new ownership.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so, yeah, and I'll, I'll make sure to, to, to flag that, but if, if I can, I'm so sorry for interrupting you, uh, Councilmember Paddock, but um, a big thank you to, um, the mayor for attending that, um, ribbon cutting for the, um, ballet school. It was really adorable, because they had their classes inside, and there was Anna and Elsa, and, you know, the mayor got dressed up. No, I'm just kidding. And it was just, it was fun, but it was wonderful, because the owner.
That's why I can't run for reelection.
Yeah, there's photo, I have the photos of it. No, but it was really wonderful, because the owner, you know, it's her third business of this type, and, um, her, her parents live here in Mill Creek.
They live in my neighborhood.
They live, that's right.
No, the aunt and uncle live in.
The aunt and uncle live, but it's just wonderful, because that tells you that, you know, because it's, um, I want to say it's either, it's the Quarrest Mamish and then Shoreline.
That's correct, and this is their third, and I believe their aunt and uncle are the former owners of the Spotted Cow.
Fantastic. So it was just, it was wonderful, because she, when, when we men, when we introduced ourselves, she was just saying how much she would love to live here in Mill Creek, um, but I won't, you know, obviously, I'm sure Shoreline is wonderful, too.
Yeah, they're very excited to be here, so sorry for the interruptions.
Yeah, sorry.
That's right, I just, um, Councilmember Steckler, there's typically a celebrity bingo caller. Who will that be for this Kiwanis?
We spared all expenses, uh, it'll be me.
Excellent.
That's it.
Okay, that brings us to audience communication. Ms. Heidel, first public comment of the new year.
Barb Heidel, Mill Creek, Washington. Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year to everyone, everyone here. I hope you all had some relaxing family time over the holidays. You have some difficult issues to address this year. I hope you are ready for the challenges, hard decisions, and work ahead. Let's have success for the growth, vision of a healthy city, and financial stability for Mill Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Anyone else? I'm not seeing any members of the public online. We have no executive session, and so with nothing further on our agenda, I'll adjourn the first of our meetings this year and thirty-three to go. So with that, we'll be adjourned at seven, I got three different times on three different clocks, so I'm gonna go by my watch, seven twenty.